Hey, welcome back, everybody. Today is May 16th. This is our afternoon session. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a public hearing for CA 22 dash 01. And before I open the public hearing, I gotta be straight, honest with you guys. I haven't had a chance to look at any of this yet. Brian, I apologize, but we got this pretty late in the week and I haven't even opened it up yet.
And I would ask for a continuation also. When we get 110 pages, Brian, we gotta have two weeks. We asked you guys that last time, but we just really need more time to prepare.
Yep, that's understandable.
The changes that you proposed are the ones that are underlined. Is that correct?
Yes, they're straight through underlying, yep.
The other one I do have a question on was the letter from the planning, like the you guys are requesting that only architects can put plans through. Give me a synopsis of that.
Yeah, so that is really codifying the administrative practices that are already in place. We have a requirement for buildings with, the code currently says, living area greater than 3,500 square feet requires an architect stamp on the plans. We, the intent of the code and how we have been practicing it for a number of years is that's based on the total structure size, which we have a definition for in our code for, which includes garage space and covered decks and patios. And so that is how we have been interpreting it and administering it as of the last several years. And so we're just bringing that code into alignment with our practices. But it does not mean that all buildings have to have an architect stamp, just those of a certain size.
Okay. I've worked with designers that are more efficient than architects.
Yes, I understand.
I have a little bit of heartburn with that one.
What page is that one on, Sherri? What are you talking about?
Send us, she forwarded us their email. I think it was on Tuesday, 5:10.
I got that. Oh, maybe it's in the other PDF.
Yeah, there's the American Institute of Building Design is requesting that they not codify that for a number of different reasons. But, and Brian, when you guys do these, so this really is something that 110 pages to go through every single page. I mean, maybe you could give us the highlights when you send these, or do you want us to actually read every one of these, or?
Yeah, I apologize. I maybe should have provided a little direction on the packet that I included. There's three different general versions of this. There's the the ordinance, the draft ordinance, that is all the changes that are being proposed. And then there's the, there was two kind of language documents that were a little more digestible and easy to read. Broken into cleanup language and food truck language. Those were really the ones that were, that would be where I'd recommend going through it. I have some staff commentary and just kind of explainers in there that would make it a little easier for you to.
And, and maybe you could share with me, so the food truck and the, so you're taking the merchandise name off temporary units. And I guess what I'm asking is, is how does this going to impact us, the impact area? Is this really something that is just pertinent in the city limits, or?
The, the intent and the hopeful outcome of it is that it will drive food trucks into our downtown core and to, you know, the commercial corridors that where it makes more sense for them to be in. It's a little bit easier for them to be in. A lot of the code language is intended to make it easier for them to be there and a little bit not, I might say strenuous, but just, you know, that they have to get neighborhooded by and things like that in order to be elsewhere. There is a small portion of commercial zone in the impact area off of Cron Lane and as you move a little further south on, or 55 outside of town. But yeah, the majority of it is in city limits. I would agree with that.
So the temporary vendor court, merchandise vendor and food vendor. Have you experienced this as an issue and this brought it up? Or is this anticipation of an issue? Give me, give me an example of why we would not allow a tent or a temporary sale of merchandise. If I'm a business and I am gonna have something over the weekend and I wanna put my shirts in a tent.
Yeah, so the city council last summer was working, had a work session with the county clerk or the city clerk's office on business license updates on that side. But their, their bested outcome from that meeting was that it be managed through planning and zoning and land use regulation rather than through business licensing because it functions more like a land use than a business. And so that was really where this code amendment began. And so we have, you know, like, there's a desire to maintain aesthetics along scenic routes and ensure safety and that businesses are being placed in logical locations, even if they're temporary ones. And so that's really the intended goal of the food truck.
So the front, the front porch and related whatever it is beside them, the little, is that who you're targeting with this type of stuff?
That is an example of a food truck court that we are, we're working with them on making sure that they're going to be compliant should the code amendment be passed.
I'm starting to a little miss something here. Why are we, why are we dealing with the stuff internal in the city?
So we. So we adopt their ordinances inside of our impact area.
Impact, but these food courts, most of them are not even in the impact, are they?
They're not currently. I think what they're doing is addressing future, future situations.
Yeah, so the city of McCall and Valley County have an agreement that we, the city administers planning and zoning and building code within the impact area.
Understand, yeah.
But then, so the, anytime we wanna change planning and zoning code, it has to get approved by the city council and county commissioners. So regardless of whether it actually, even if it is only another central business district that is completely within city limits, we still have to take it through you guys for your approval, so.
Yeah, I understand. I think that makes sense. What we're doing is when we're talking about any of this, you know, there's a, there's a perspective that comes out into the impact. Eventually. Well, I didn't, I'm sorry, but I don't seem to find a copy of this anywhere.
I sent it to you this morning, too.
You did? Oh, I wasn't looking for Sherri. I guess a little here.
Sent it, sent it on the 10th.
Yeah, so this one that you sent me this morning at nine o'clock?
Probably.
Okay, 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 got it. All right.
Doug, can we put this, when do you have to have this done, Brian? Do you have a timeframe here?
I will say I have some applications that are waiting on getting this done. Particularly regarding food truck courts and accessory dwelling units. But, you know, they could wait a week. That's not the end of the world.
I think that's what we're gonna have to do, Brian. There's just too much here for me to even start going through.
I don't know if we can get it on next week. We're already moving stuff off next week. But we'll have to see if Doug can get it on there. So on the ADUs, basically what I saw was you are gonna allow, there are permitted uses now in residential zones instead of having to go through any administrative.
So they would be subject to an administrative design review instead of a planning and zoning commission level hearing.
Okay, so then we're gonna move on because we got more on the agenda.
Well, I think I need you guys to continue it to a specific date.
Right, yeah. Doug, when are we looking at? When can we squeeze this in?
Commissioners, do you know how long you anticipate the shed conversion discussion and decision to take at 3:00 PM on the 23rd?
3:00 PM on the 23rd?
No, no, that's the shed.
Oh, I don't know.
How long have we got on there, Doug?
We have an hour.
Yeah, I think if we do a half hour, we should be able to do this. What's your opinion?
We continue this public hearing for 3:30 on May 23rd.
May 23rd, huh?
You got that, Brian? 3:30 on May 23rd?
All right, sounds great. See you guys.
And I promise I'll try and read it and go through it.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, thank you.
What you're doing here, you're essentially doing a full-on review of their entire ordinance package.
That's our ordinance for the impact areas, too, so.
Where Sanda comes into play here is really important to us.
She doesn't, nope.
Yeah, I mean, but having a review, she's a more capable person of reviewing this, but than I am, I'm sure.
I don't have anything to do with the planning and zoning in the impact area. Historically, I've at the end of everything, when it's sent to me by them after approval, then, you know, we put it in our code. That's all I typically have to do with it.
What I'm saying is, is from a review standpoint, it's, it's language you understand quite well.
It is language I understand, but I do not know any, I don't keep up on McCall's codes. But I do try to follow.
I'd like to hear about the gun shooting deal before I have to go and run all the way through that. So it's outside of your purview. It's outside of the city of McCall's purview. So what, they go through the sheriff's office?
Yeah, it's not in my, you know, my ordinance excludes anything in the impact area for planning. I would require a conditional use permit. Their codes require an event permit, which doesn't cover the impact area. It's like a no man's land, but the Valley County Sheriff, I talked to her earlier today. And so she'll do the large gathering permit, but she's gonna talk to Oki about that.
Mrs. Forrester, I haven't heard anything about this.
I posed earlier today.
I haven't gotten my emails yet.
Did I send it to you? It's a vent, many vendors for guns and accessory things that go along with guns, a shooting range, a rifle range, a pistol range. They anticipate 1,200 people and they say it's gonna be on Meckel's permit, I mean Meckel's gravel extraction down there by Payette River Sub and underneath White Cloud. They'll have to go through White Cloud to get there.
Pretty big event.
Says here, Harry Solon owns the property, Mount Meckel.
That's what I, I told him that last week also. They said no, Meckel owns it, nope.
So, so if they, if they offer in the city, if they approve an event like that, we really don't have, since it seemed like in the, we used to have kind of lease sign-offs on those.
If they, if it was a land use permit, then they would be able to approve something out there. But their land use ordinances don't cover things like this. But the sheriff has a lot of different things that she can impose. Probably the only thing that really isn't taken care of is noise.
Great for a shooting event.
Yeah, that's not.
For one weekend?
And so essentially, the city would be the one charged with, you know, a permit, issuing a permit. At that point, the county doesn't have an opportunity to review that, to buy up on it here.
If it was a land use and it went through their planning and zoning, the final decision would be with the board of county commissioners.
But when we do.
And it's not land use.
But when we do stuff like that in the county.
It's land use.
Yeah.
But we have that portion in Title IV that allows permits by the sheriff for large gatherings. Public assemblies. So I guess they can pigeonhole it under public assembly.
This, this is just a one-time event, right?
Yes, as far as I know.
And they're shooting.
And but you're gonna set a precedence.
Versus one of the subdivisions on either side of them.
But if that goes through quite easily, you're gonna set quite a precedence there for continuation.
Right, I mean, and especially in, I'm sorry, Brian's supposed to talk to her at some point. But if she has no way to deny it, then yes, everybody will just go to the McCall impact area.
Yeah, that's.
For large gatherings.
There's some danger up in there from that standpoint, yeah.
We already have an issue with a shooting range that's up Warren Wagon and then heading up that I've gotta look into and start, yeah.
Yeah, so these, this needs to be part of that impact area discussion.
Yeah.
Because there are some things out there that are not being covered.
They really do. We, we have some, we should have some responsibility.
Well, and didn't we talk about this once, like, if they do a single event once a year, but they do it year after year after year, they have to get a CUP, correct?
In the county, they do.
In the county, not in the impact area.
I don't keep up with their ordinances. And it's not a land use ordinance according to them. Land use. It's a event permit.
So that's just one more thing, like you said, to put into that.
Yeah, but I did talk to Sheriff Boland and went through her ordinance with, her code with her. And her next step is to get with Oki.
Do what?
She's gonna talk to Brian, Oki.
Okay.
Perfect. One more thing to discuss.
County needs to have some, some sort of oversight on the final decisions on some of that stuff, I think. I don't know. I thought we had that for years.
The impact area is that gray zone that nobody wants to touch, and we need to fix that.
Even in the impact, when originally, they would bring, their planner would bring stuff to us for approval. And we decided it's best for you guys to take care of that, but I understood it, it had to be signed off ultimately to the board of county commissioners. I may be wrong there, but yeah.
Well, that, I think that's what Brian's recommending.
Yeah.
We need a change in policy, so.
Because you can't have, you can't have a no man's land there. It's not a good idea. Where are we? Oh, county commissioner.
Just fell back in my phone cabinet. Well, we're gonna go ahead and start this next presentation a little early, but this is regarding the commercial solid waste collection data. And Anthony, I really appreciate all your work on this. I stopped by the other day to talk to you about some of the details of it. And if I remember correctly, you were gonna get with Lake Shore, figure out which commercial ones and how many yards or tonnage they were each one doing. And then we were gonna talk about a different rate for those high producers. Is that correct?
Yep, and they did give me a list with yardage and tonnage, various info. So I tried to match up as many of, because they didn't have parcel numbers, so I tried to match up.
Do we need to be on the microphone?
Yeah, you probably better come to Mike, Anthony, so we can all hear you.
And Mr. Chairman, just to elaborate on that, and then that information was to be shared with Travis Pyle with Great West Engineering. Great West Engineering is going to be doing a formal presentation on June 13th. As soon as that I could get them on the agenda to make a presentation to the commissioners.
Okay, so go ahead, Anthony.
Yeah, I got the information from Lake Shore. They sent me some of their commercial properties that they service. They had addresses and various names, so it was kind of a challenge to match up those parcels with the parcel number, those businesses, but got quite a few of them. I think on the list, I didn't include the exempt properties, like churches and stuff that do have solid waste. They had some of those on their list. What I think, I read through Great West's documents and it's like they've done a really good job. And I think we need to get a more detailed list from Lake Shore. See if we can track down numbers and then pass that on to Great West and let them kind of go through, because they understand what they're doing, the yardage and the tonnage. I'm clueless on that stuff. Kind of have them help us decide how many units or give us an idea of what kind of units to put on each business. And see where they're at, possibly go with their recommendation, but it's kind of where we're at with this whole thing.
Yeah, and I'm just looking, it talks a lot about units. Some of the Lake Shore stuff, I don't know if a unit is a yard or a ton.
Yeah, and that was confusing to me, too. If it's a dumpster, if it's a.
And then how many times, I'm guessing, a year they service it?
Were they gonna be here today? Was Lake Shore gonna be here today, or?
I don't know. No idea. Oh, here we go. So I guess what we need to figure out is how I can get, how we can get Lake Shore more involved with this. I wonder why they didn't come. Did anybody know? Did they not get contacted, apparently?
Hey, I thought they did in the email chain. I thought Gabby included them.
It's just 1:30, maybe he'll walk in here in a minute, but. Well, I guess what I'm trying to get to, Anthony, is what other information do you need to get this list completed? Do you have specifics, commercial, that you don't have information on?
Yeah, there's a few parcels that are, a few businesses that are missing. And some of them I just couldn't match up. The names didn't fit, or the address was, the billing address was on there instead of the pickup address. So if they could get us a list of all of their commercial customers, including the exempt, and then or a pickup address where they actually pick it up at, and we can match up parcel numbers pretty, pretty easy. If we could get that list almost completed, I think it would go a long way to help Great West put together a good study to match up with what the landfill needs to keep operating.
Running notes here. Anything else we need besides that?
I don't think so. I think that's the biggest thing. So we could get that data, then they can, and I can get them info, they can analyze it and.
Well, and I'm, I'm kinda guessing, you guys correct me if I'm wrong here, but it seems to me like what we're trying to get to is we have different commercial. Checkouts are all paying the same now, but there's some that aren't contributing very much and there's others that are contributing a lot.
Right, well, you got Tanarak.
We need to break those out to a different.
Tanarak has many dumpsters that they have dumped every day, but Tackle Tom's got a green bin that they get dumped once a week. A little green garbage can, so, but they all pay the same. A flower shop or a grocery store, restaurant, and they're all on the same rate when, like you say, some are generating a lot more garbage than some of the smaller. And I think that's what we're trying to accomplish, is to make it fair for everybody.
Right, right.
So we got a whole bunch of information, like I've got Cootney County's ordinance. They've got, we've got the report, I guess. So did you send us all this? Scott, did you send us all this?
This was from Mr. Pyle, Commissioner Martin.
Near the end of that report, they have a pretty good idea of where they would like to see this, but they just need more information. That's where we're trying to get it from Lake Shore.
I thought they had this information from Lake Shore.
I don't think it's a complete, I don't think it's a full list. It's a good chunk of kind of what they sent to us, but we're still missing some of them.
Because they requested, when, I think, looking at actually passing ordinance, require them to pass it or to provide it, and then they came forth with it. And we gotta understand what their numbers mean. We don't really know what, you know, current units are. You know, you look at yardage and there's a lot of zeros and all of a sudden you have a two.
So I guess what we need to do is make sure we get back to Lake Shore, requesting that information, and hopefully within a week or two, and then we'll get that to what's his name, Kevin? Kyle? So that he can finish up doing that before the June meeting. I'm kind of stuck here with them not here today, so.
Yeah, if we could get that to them, and then they could give us a great recommendation on how to go forward. I think that's, they put a lot of time into it. That report was pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can you come up with a list of those commercials that you don't have, get to Lake Shore?
Yeah, we can do that with, I can write a report for everything that has a solid, a commercial solid waste. I have it on that one spreadsheet. At least I didn't include the churches and schools exempt. That would literally take me ten fifteen minutes to put together.
So then what I'm gonna do, if it's all right with you, Anthony, is I'll just get with Scott, and Lake Shore and Haven, get with you and get that list, and then
Yeah, that works.
Try and get it back to us at least by the end of the week or end of the month.
Yeah, if we can just get that list and match it up with as many parcel numbers, because that's how gonna have to determine for DeeDee to put in the number of solid waste for each. We're gonna need those parcel numbers. And that's, I think, where our end is gonna really come in.
What's your office number?
7129 is my direct.
So I will get with Scott Carnes, her. And hopefully he'll give you a call here next day or two and go from there. That's all we can do, I think, today.
Yeah, I think so.
Scott, do you, is there anything else you could think of that we need?
No. I'll get with Travis and see, because I thought we asked him this information on earlier, too. What he has to complete is, he doesn't have this, but I thought for some reason we'd already passed this on to you.
He's got the spreadsheet, I believe, so I should have enough information. I could build something pretty good. We just need to get the rest of it.
You just need to get the rest and get everybody in there. Okay, anybody else have any other questions or comments?
No.
What can we move around? This had an hour, ten minutes.
Sherri, would you send that thing, whatever it is, to me? I can't, I can't find this. Is there something I need?
So it was part of your packet. So did you get the packet?
I don't.
That was on the 12th, on Thursday. I'll just forward that packet to you.
I don't, how was it titled?
Gabby Knapp, Final Commissioner's Agenda. Gabby Knapp, Final Commissioner's Agenda.
Okay, I did get a final, I did get a final. Let me just look real quick here again.
Chairman, do you wanna go off the record?
Um, let me think here. Let me look, let me look, let me look. Our next agenda item is at two forty. Jeez.
Can we get the, I've gotta be in McCall at five, so I'm gonna miss out on part of Scott's evaluations afternoon. Unless we can move anything else up.
Do the executive session right now.
We could do the executive right now. Maybe if the patrol guys were around, we could do that sheriff's office.
Unfortunately, that's, I would defer to Mr. Oki, but I think since it's a workshop, I think you have to stick with the time that's on.
Got it.
So let me go see if I catch Brian, if we could do that executive now.
You can do the executive session now. That's not, it's up for debate.
Did you call it though?
No.
No, that, that's Scott's, that is Scott Klingon's evaluation. If we can grab Scott and Pat.
I thought it was litigation.
No, it's also employee staffer, agent personnel. Oh.
Okay.
I, Pat told us that Scott's was up this week, so I'm sure it's, did you find that in?
I think in my, I don't, I just get him, I just get the agenda.
So is that the draft one or is that the one with?
Commissioner Allen, it was ma- emailed out on May twelfth at four thirty P M.
Just sent it to you again, so you have.
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure you're right. I mean, twelfth. I need to miss stuff like that. That's not right.
Always have to make sure that you're getting everything, so.
Yeah.
Get a chance to prep before you get here. Doug, your voice sounds worse. You got a second?
No, no.
Allergies?
My allergy has been horrible this year. Still on the record. I wish we could go back to the. Solid waste collection because unfortunately it appears to me that the clerk's office is kind of getting. Putting the blame on trying to get this organized, and it was my understanding that, um. This Great West Engineering evaluation or, uh, study was requested quite some time ago. If you recall, we had a formal meeting. The, Mr. Pyle reached out to us and said that he hasn't heard from us and how are we going to proceed with this? And it was my understanding that there was additional data that he had not received from the assessor's office. So I, I don't think that we provided Mr. Pyle with everything to complete his.
No, no, we gotta get all of that. We were supposed to.
And I haven't had, we haven't had much luck with finding out what's.
Looking for things to do.
And that's not your problem.